There is one few even left.
Does that have a Stephen?
It's it's hanging out over by uh.
Screen that wants it.
You don't think I have it. But she went over.
You know. All right. We are gonna call together the March twenty eighth meeting of the commission. For Oakland and please stand for the pledge and the invocation. I pledge. Miss Mack, could you please um bless us with an invocation?
Most of the family is probably busy. I will follow which God in heaven. Hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thou wilt be done in every thing, and wilt be in heaven. Give us this thing, our daily bread. And forgive us our debt as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is your kingdom, and the power, and the glory. Follow me, for am I as it in Jacob. We come to say thank you for unity, peace, harmony, and love. Help us to reach out and love ye well known. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Miss Mack.
Thank you, Miss Anderson.
I persuaded Miss Mack to stay to do the invocation, so I told her she had permission to go whenever she was ready. So we have um. We'll call, please.
And we'll call, Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Frams.
President.
Like here, Satterfield.
President.
Here, Sturtevant.
Here.
Mr. Pollan is not with us, but we had a cross.
Thank you very much. So the first thing we get to do is this is Steve's last. Commission meeting, so we said we were gonna drag it out really long and boring.
You must matter.
And we have something. Doesn't even begin to cover how we feel about religion. But I think you'll like. And uh that was a combined effort. Um Jennifer Hunt really, did she take the lead on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Open it. Yeah, we said we have it.
Wow, that's wonderful.
May you're getting it too. Laurie, you're in it too.
All right, come on.
I mean, like you're actually in this picture, Laurie.
Yeah, you are. We, I don't know, maybe we shouldn't have her in this picture. You're the reason that he can go. Awesome.
Yeah.
And here's a very heartfelt part. From the staff and from the commission. So the question was absolutely.
Wonderful.
Yeah, but you live spot. We're gonna have to go wait, it's too much. Oh, yeah, which way do we go on? Are you gonna go like front and then you go? Never just by the flag or something towards their thing or just. They would. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, one, two, three. Come get a couple more. I think one, one, four. That it? Yeah, see next week.
So we signed copies for sale in the history center third.
That is so.
A couple of the Blue Hikes that we went on.
That's your new home.
Actually behind it.
Okay. Some proclamations. Town of Oakland Water Conservation Month, do you have anybody here for this? No. Okay. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the town of Oakland are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the town of Oakland and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month, when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month. To educate the citizens about how they can help and save water's precious Florida's precious water resource. Whereas the town of Oakland is always encouraged and supported water conservation in various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes conserving water. Whereas business, industry, school, and citizens can help by saving water, thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore, be it resolved that by the virtue of the authority vested in me, Kathy Stark as mayor of the town of Oakland, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. Now we have. Town of Oakland Child Abuse Prevention Month, Wear Blue Day. Anybody here for this? Okay. Whereas Florida's bright future depends on a healthy development of its children. And whereas adverse childhood experiences can, including abuse and neglect of children, can cause severe and costly consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. And whereas every child has the right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track. And whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in the times of trouble are reluctant and better able, resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. Whereas it is vital that individuals, businesses, schools, and community organizations make children a top priority and take action to support physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. Whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month and Wear Blue Day are important opportunities to urge the town of Oakland residents to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities and that can provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Now therefore, be it resolved, by virtue of the authority vested in me, Kathy Stark as mayor of Oakland, do we hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-three as Child Prevention Month and March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three as Wear Blue Day?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's police for making sure these are all done and right. All right, um. We have, first thing we have here is public forum. Anybody here who wants to address something that is not already on the agenda? This is your opportunity to speak, we ask your comments for you. Do we have any takers? Um consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda.
Moved and seconded, um do we have any comments or questions from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash oh one.
Hi. Sarah Massesam, you're contract with Tom Flanders. I have three cases to present to you today. The first of which will be the voluntary annexation. Ordinance number twenty-three uh zero one. Police, you need to read it up. Ordinance twenty-two thirty-four zero one. Whole Island Drive Annexation, in accordance of the town of Oakland, Florida, and it's in by voluntary petition, certain real property owned by James Weevil and Mary Lee, where bearing property tax parcel identification number nineteen dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash three seven seven six, at zero zero dash zero three zero, ten sixteen Whole Island Drive, and located contiguous to the town of Oakland in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one seventy-one point four four, where the statutes and other joint law redefining the boundaries of the town of Oakland to include said property, providing her findings, providing her conditions, directing the town clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, with the chief administrative officer, with the department of state, providing her legal discretion and amount, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with providing for severability, providing for non-complication, taking administrative actions, and providing for an effective date. So a summary of the requests, the applicant is James Weevil and Mary Lee. They're located at ten fifteen Whole Island Drive, which is lots free and for a full island and state subdivision. This is currently an unincorporated parcel that is within the joint planning area. The property is approximately um one point two five acres. And the requests that we're reviewing today are voluntary annexation to assign a town's future land use designation and to assign a town zoning designation and design district designation.
Well, you can do it. We're all watching it. If that helps.
Want me to do it? Yeah. Okay. Um, this map shows you the current boundaries. The parcel in black is the subject parcel that's up today here. And this parcel is also within the joint planning area. This app that shows that area. This is an agreement between Orange County and the town of Oakland that identified future properties for annexation and laid out requirements um for those. So the applicant submitted for voluntary annexation. This was reviewed for compliance with section one seventy-one oh four three of the Florida State statutes. It was also reviewed for compliance with the JPA and town requirements. Um, a summary of some of the requirements that were looked at was the town or if the area is adjacent and compact, which it is, and if it has availability to um connect to water and sewer, and if the town can provide all public services. Okay, overview of the required notices that were um that were required statute to go out. Annexation notice letters went to Orange County on February twenty-fourth. The newspaper um notice was published in the Orange County, or the Orange Observer on March ninth and March sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And then there was a post sign on the property um on March seventh. We've received no objections and town. Any question?
I'm there.
No, I don't have any. We, we also.
Is the owner's here, James and Mary?
Yeah, of course.
Beautiful home. Love the tusk and trees you have in.
Um, so if we have no other questions from the table.
I'll make a motion of one inch two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one.
I'll second it.
Um, so you can just second, this is a public hearing. And I will go to the folks in the audience, if they have any questions. Bring it back to the table. All in favor? Okay, now I'm going to move it on to ordinance twenty-two zero two, ten sixteen Whole Island Drive Comp Plan Amendment, in accordance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopt. Future land use designation for the comprehensive and low density residential for certain real property owned by James Weevil, Mary Lee, located on address ten sixteen Whole Island Drive. It's more particularly described here in with the question inside one twenty-two acres, making final provided for common severability and for an effective date. So the second case I have to present to you today is ordinance twenty-two three oh two. That's for the comp plan amendment. Um, the applicants again, James and Mary, James Weevil and Mary Lee at ten sixteen Whole Island Drive. This is to assign the town's future land use designation of low density residential. This is the proposed um future land use map uh showing that designation. Um, this is consistent with the surrounding future land use, the staff recommends.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Um, I need the voting, please.
I'll make a motion to uh.
I'll second. Back to them.
Do we have any um questions to bond to? Right, I'll listen. And bring it back to the table, all in favor? Couple more.
Okay, so we're on ordinance twenty-two zero three, ten sixteen Whole Island Drive Rezoning. In accordance, the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a town official zoning map designation of R one A, single family residential for certain real property owned by James Weevil and Mary Lee. Uh, we have the following address, ten fifteen Whole Island Drive, as more particularly described here in with an approximate size of one point two nine acres, making findings and providing for complex severability and for an effective date. Thanks, sir. Hey. So again, this is the rezoning and design district assignment uh under ordinance twenty-two three oh two. James Weevil, Mary Lee at ten sixteen Whole Island Drive. Um, this application is to assign the town zoning designation of R one A and the design district of neighborhood general. Um, R one A is consistent with the uh surrounding properties and consistent with what the comp plan uh allows. And then this map shows that the consistency with the neighborhood general design district assignment that recommends.
All right, um. Do we have any questions to comment? I need to vote people.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-two three dash zero three. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. I'm gonna open a public hearing, if you have any questions, comments. Do the applicants, would you like to say anything at all? We're just happy we're saying yes.
This is the easy one.
I like that approach. Um, so I'm gonna open, I did do a public hearing, I'm opening a public hearing, anybody have any questions? And bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, welcome to the town vote.
Again, again.
Ready to go to the next meeting.
Well, welcome then.
Well, that's enough, you carried away.
Thank you for joining us again.
John's Lake, Alphal, from now.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I have in my hands the permit from Saint John's River Water Management District to do canal restoration works. What I do not have in my hand is the easement agreement from the HOA. They are still working on that, their attorney is drafting one that they find acceptable. And when we get that, we'll be able to evaluate it. And we've also gotten a temporary construction easement from Bob Christie to be able to go across his property. Which kind of sticks out, there will point that sticks out where we'd be laying the pipes and those type of things for the judging work. Uh, and we're expecting to have the easement agreement draft from Oakland Park tomorrow. So we're, we're on track, assuming that we can get the HOA easement, that we'll be able to start work next week.
And um, I just would like to make a point of clarification once again. We're not asking the HOA's for it, I'm. And you know, this might even handle in this, but um, also we are going to be, we're worried we're gonna increase taxes. This will not have fair whether we increase taxes or not, and our intent is the same too. So this is not enough money to do that.
Nor are we asking private residents to help fund it, you know, either.
Yeah. So I, I think I spoiled it.
And as long as we can get the um the contract back for the easement uh this week, sometimes we should be able to stay on track for that April, to get done by the end of April. So that's the hope, so. Um, I just heard whatever I'm driving, so we should have no trouble right with the work, so.
Go right before the rain season, so that's.
I didn't have it for every good news.
Yes.
So.
They expect to be able to complete the work during the month of April, if we can get started next week.
Awesome.
And as far as pushing forward, you know, Orange County really seems to be stepping up the, you know, the interest. They're, they're getting their, um, study done, which will lead us to go further up, you know, up the canal and see what kind of projects, you know, need to go. And the help you talked about is right on top of the radar too. Um, we went and looked at it, you know, you know, to make sure that it wasn't gonna fall in the mire.
So Orange County has been cleaning out vegetation along the shoreline in that area. So that it can be better visible for their engineering analysis.
So and that's the point, the two big entities, Orange County and Saint John's, have both gotten on board with the interest, you know, appreciably so, um, that as long as this project is going to take, you know, and now get done, I don't see any sudden progress coming. So, okay.
And Oakland Park's participation has been.
They have been wonderful with it, actually. They really have, um, you know, they're pitching in to get to the end of it with us and uh uh that we're in a group, we're really working hard with us.
Good.
Good.
Any questions from anybody else at the table?
Oh.
Any questions in the audience?
Please. There you go.
HOA, are we talking Center notes?
Center notes.
They're not at Oakland Park, not understanding.
So what we're doing with uh Oakland Park is a, is a joint participation agreement as well as the easement because we're gonna be paying some money in and what we do for that.
All right. We are going to move on to water tower, like.
Water tower. Then at thirty. I'm not gonna, I can't advance the slide myself. I'm gonna do better than her, I'll go her up.
Water tower. We uh back in the fall uh worked with the company that maintains the paint on the water tower to replace the old logo with a new logo. And then after that, uh worked with the electrical company to replace the broken lights uh that shine on it, we had some old lights, six fixtures, we replaced them with four LED fixtures. Uh, this tank is one of the few elevated tanks still in operation in central Florida, mostly now. We're just uh sitting there, uh they don't have any water in them. Uh, but we put the logo on there and we repaired the lights. And they're going, and that was when it became a commercial item, which was uh concerned about the lights. So we, I wanted to show you some of the other examples that we've come across. Of course, this is the one in Winter Garden. Uh, I spoke with them, uh it's about a hundred years old. And they applied their new city, they'll go to it as well, and they put lights on the system, their lights are on that little narrow walkway around the bottom and they shine up, which you can see by the fact that that little funnel kind of top uh is picking up the light. Uh, they have reported no bird strikes. They have had a problem with a few birds nesting up there on that uh walkway. Uh, and that has caused some problems. You can't see it very well in the photograph, but they have several antennas up there uh for different radio reading systems that they operate. They tend to, to go up there and deal with the birds, that's when they interfered with that. But uh this is something that they've had successfully for a couple of times. Uh, next slide. Uh, we start looking around and there are a number of local governments that have lit their elevated tanks. Uh, the one on the left, they actually have projectors down on the ground uh that uh put moving images on their oval sort of water tank. Uh, the one on the right, uh they actually have an application program to have the tower lit a particular color in celebration of events or groups. Uh, their website shows uh the application process and what colors they're gonna have on particular dates uh to be able to have that. The next slide. Uh, we similarly in uh in Campbell in California, this was a, I wanted to bring this one up especially. Uh, it's, it's perhaps hard to see, this is another one of those funnel top uh water tanks like they have in Winter Garden. But in the upper left corner, you'll see that they actually use a caricature of their water tank as their town logo. And the picture on the right, they sell shirts that have the logo on the water tank, a drawing of that. And that sort of gave us the idea that potentially this would be something that we could use. You know, we've talked several times about selling shirts and things uh at the Arts and Heritage Center. But we need to be careful that they don't look official in the sense that they are gonna be moving to uniforms for several of our town employees, and so we have to make them look different. And so this was a good approach, uh just an example of how they've taken the logo, but they put it in something else where you can tell that it's not an official uniform.
All right. Good idea though.
Uh, next slide. So uh some of them, uh they've given different reasons for how they lit it up. This is another oval water tank that has lighting from below. They dressed it up extra by stringing these lights off the top, which I don't know how they do. Have to look, but it's like, we got it before we did it.
Yeah. And you know. Nice to you, I don't think it's anything.
Oh, that's.
It's.
It'd be hard to do here because shape of the tank. But they, they were talking about that they did it to raise awareness of the importance of water. Uh huh, next slide. So after the question was raised about the, the lighting potentially being a, a problem, uh we went to two organizations that have guidance on this topic. One was the International Dark Sky Association. And they don't actually have, of course, a standard for lighting water towers, that's kind of usual thing in terms of their uh interest group. So they have general guidance though for outside lighting. And only like the area that needs it was the first item, and we can check that off because we have a strong cutoff boundary around our lights, they only shine on the logo. Uh, no brighter than necessary. They're the same brightness that of the lights that we had before. They don't use as much electricity because they're LEDs, and we only have four of them instead of six, but it's the same candle power. And then eliminate upward directed light. Ours are actually out on outriggers on the, on the railing, so they're shining straight at the logo red, and the logo is, starts directly opposite them, so they don't shine up into the sky. And the last one there, minimizing blue light emissions, that has to do with the temperature of the light. Uh, and we'll talk about that. And we'll talk about that, uh, more on the slide. So we also went to a group called birdgas.info. Uh, this is a great website that you can actually go any place in the United States and it will tell you about migrating birds. What kind of birds are there, what time they are around, how many there may be. Uh, and this indicated the same thing that we got from the Audubon Society and that is it's songbirds. Are the most likely species to migrate at night. And the Orlando area, uh, when they do that, it's normally between eleven P M and six A M. They generally though are flying at around two thousand feet.
Which is in comparison to water tower?
Is that a hundred and thirteen?
So they're higher?
They're higher. And they're usually further east or west, but based on where the, where they are in their glide path. The types of food that they're looking for and that they establish that. So, uh, wanted to bring it to the commission for some direction. Of course, we, I put in the logo on there, we wanted to use the water tower as a town marker. Uh, we've checked the visibility, you can see it coming up north on the turnpike. You can of course see it from over in, uh, Claremont. And it's also visible on state from State Road fifty and, and some other areas. And it marks the center of town, uh, that that's, you might say, the, the traditional center of town. So I've got their four options of that to be considered for. Well, we might want to try to move forward. Uh, one is just to turn the lights back on. It's on a photocell and they would be on all night like they went in Winter Garden. We could leave them off permanently, or we could install a timer that turned them off at eleven o'clock at night. Uh, or we could replace the fixtures, I talked about the, the heat of the lamps. We have five, five thousand watt lamps because we wanted pure, what, we wanted it to be rather than correcting the color. Because we have a brown logo, that if you had the yellow or lights, it's kind of alters the. Okay, alters the contrast.
And that's the difference between.
Three thousand, three thousand is, is kind of a brownish light. It's like the, the cool white versus the warm white that you could buy for lamps in your house. So just to put that out there as a, a point for the discussion.
I, I think we do, you know, a, a pretty robust discussion about this. And I, I welcome that on this topic. When you say general guidance on related areas, we. Be no brighter than necessary is actually what going forward. Those new lights were way brighter than the old.
I wasn't here for the original ones, I was just going by the counter power ratings.
Yeah, they were, and I think there are people who. Back me up on that one, change back. So I think, you know, at a minute, here's where us. I, there are people talking before this meeting, but it's. Don't like, you should sell, um, but they had other obligations. And they want to know. And here's what, you know, where I am is. I want lights because we're losing and a great opportunity to showcase our town and our water tower. Number one, I don't want furs, fur impacted in any way, so every decision we have to make. Really comes down to those two things. Really think that the launch should be farther than they are. Um, the lighting on the, whatever you call them, or they sit out, it is fine with me. I just think they, you know, it was a, you know, it was market change. From what we had to what we want to, so. You know, at a minimum, we analyze and then after we get all that figured out, then we can start to look at. You know, all those fancy other things that we may, may or may not want to.
The, the switch, the switch to the cooler lamps, you would also plan to switch to the, the lowest wattage setting that you can get.
I'm, I'm with the mayor that they are quite a bit brighter than, than they were beforehand. I think I can read by them at night. So, um, but my only take on it is this, before we did anything, the lights before they, they wrote, when they, the lights are at their best time. Seemed to be not a problem for anybody, seemed to be not a problem for the birds, if we get back to, to that. We would probably be okay.
Without, without using those kind of lights, because they're not.
And then what we, you know, yeah. And that would be my take on this, it's not, um, you know, again, like you said. Yeah, and I, I, I don't want to, uh, distract any of the, the wildlife at all, but we had no problem with it. Or, well, so we could get to that level, would probably satisfy everyone, I don't, that's just.
As a first.
Yeah, the lights before were more yellow, they were high pressure sodium, and maybe that's the difference because you talk about the brown with the. No, that's my opinion.
I like the lights, I like to see them dimmer for the LED lights, and I'd like to see if you guys can explore those outriggers. See if you can have them, uh, extend out and shine, shine down instead of up. I know you can do.
Me from the, from the roof.
Correct, so the outriggers right now, they're on a rail.
On the railing.
Correct, so, but there's area points there, got piping going up to see if they can. Put outriggers sticking out facing down without disturbing them.
For the shape mess.
The shape of the tank because of the way it's rounded, for, they, they'd have to be pretty long.
That would be quite the construction feat to try it out.
Well, I mean, explore into it, find out, you know, what's feasible, now they got, you know, aluminum piping that's pretty light, that can carry LEDs. LED lights are not that heavy, like the old fashioned lights, so exploring that to see if we can make it shine down. And like it to be dimmer, yes, but if it's going to change the color to a brown, yellow tank.
White tank with the brown, that is really nice.
And you find a way to shine down, it's just shining up. To me, that would be the, the solution, because you still get to see the white canvas with our logo color. Instead of distorting it with a beige, with beige, yellowish.
Well, the LEDs have a very sharp edge on them, you know, like car headlights now, uh, so that they. The top of the tank is completely dark. This, I know they're only on for a couple of days, but, uh, they really don't. Besides the reflection, the, because of the amount of the light, uh, they're not, they're not lighting up the sky per se.
Yeah, these are, these are, are going directly at the tank, there, there's no, there's no upward light on these. And they were going directly at the tank. Um, I understand where you're trying to be is, you know, because. But I think this is, is really, you know, a, a doubt of, of, you know, it's shining directly at, at the tank. Versus going up or trying to get down, um. They definitely aren't going up like what they've got in Winter Guard, in Winter Gardens are going straight up and, and catching up. Uh, you could see the clear line when the lights were on, uh, of, of where the, the LEDs were going. So maybe just that they were too bright and given the idea that they were, you know, causing the upward, but, but they were. Um, very much focused on just the logo.
So I wouldn't just stay on the dim lights and be done with it, I like to see the dim lights. And let us make a judgment call, because I don't want to distort our logo, our, our logo is really nice and I don't want to have them confused with a yellow.
Well, you, you're going to start running into cost issues, if you keep, you know, you, you're going to need to make a decision, you've got. Light. At, at the, or you're at the five thousand and just doing lower watts, or you've got the three thousand and doing lower. But you're gonna, if you keep switching around, you're going to have problems with, you know, figuring out, I don't know if they, they give you samples to use or whatever, but I, I kind of doubt that. So you're going to run into a cost issue. If, if you had.
That's, that's the cheap version, Mayor, because when I built my house, I knocked down every single wall. That plaza is not big enough, so scratch, knock it down.
So, so, so the compromise you've got here is you had, it's just like when we, when we changed out the streetlights, you had more of the yellow or streetlight. Now we've got the wider streetlights. You can go to the, you had more of a yellow or light on there previously, so if you go down to the three thousand K. And you go down to the three thousand K at the, the, the minimum loss that they give you, it should give you a nice look. It, did it feel distorted previously when the old, older lights were on there with, because the color of the logo hasn't changed that much. So it might distort it a little bit, but if y'all were happy with the way it looked previously, then maybe the three thousand is what you're looking for.
And you know, and I don't know Rick. We just got a lot to say about it, which, here, but the other thing that, that I would just add in the boardroom round is. I, personally, I wouldn't be opposed to ours either, because it's the middle of the night, you know, so. You don't get a lot, you know, people can see the one, two, three, five. Maybe that might be a compromise too. I don't have any opinion either way, but it could.
Now, or whether there's, you know, reason for us to do that. Because I want protected birds, you know, too, but we also, it's an iconic. Piece of our town, and I don't want to have to turn the lights off unless I have no other choice. I do appreciate that you guys reacted and turned the lights off if we can figure this out. So, but I think we need to let Rick talk, because this is really something.
So I'm going to be a little different here, I'm gonna, I'm leaning towards keeping them off permanently. I mean, it, it, if you see, you can, you tell them you can see it from the turnpike. That tells me it's just really too bright and I just don't see how it's not going to affect bird life. And we're unique where we are, we're situated around water, we're going to have more nightlife. Than by the other municipalities. Another thing is, you know, we adopted the, uh, dark side lighting back in January two thousand twenty-one. And then our ordinance that even states the white light of even a low color temperature LED can be a threat to the local nighttime environment. So by lighting it up, I think we're contradicting ourselves. Why end up here?
Means that you could use the yellow.
Well, it says even a low color temperature, which would be like a three thousand would be a lower.
But that's going to be white. Right, three thousand will be white.
It'll be, it'll be that warm white color like you could have on a lamp in your house.
And one, one's up there for three days.
Right, when you, when you, when you lower the temperature, it, it gets brown or it is brown, brown. It gets yellow over daylight, I kind of like the yellow or here, these, these lights here are that.
Warm light.
As opposed to, you know, a, a pure LED like you would have on your cars, you know, when a car is coming towards you at night. You get the real white and you get a little bit of a tannish kind of a look, well, that's the same difference we're talking about.
So really, if we lower to three thousand, it's not going to be a white light.
No, but what they were saying, even the white light of a low colored temperature can be a threat to local.
Of a low color.
Yeah, but even the, the low color, even white light is coming out of a lower temperature, it still have.
I mean, the, what about the compromise of the lower white? Turn it off at eleven, the birds are two thousand feet up in the air. And then turn it.
Well, that's the, that was, he was referring to songbirds, we, he's talking about the migratory birds. I believe, and we also have, uh, local birds, you know, the owls. We got other light, I mean, other night light that aren't flying that high. I mean, owls aren't, they're, they're aren't flying to two thousand feet.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to be here for one minute here. If we're going to go that far, that's not turn on one of the most iconic things we have here in town, if we're not going to let it. Our facts in, in a row. And, you know, he found that information on migratory birds. You know, it's Oakland Nature Reserve, or Friends of Lake Hopka, or whoever has this type of information. They need, people who live here, they need to either bring it to us, tell us. I'm just not going to say, well, my, you know, birds that live here might be affected, I want some facts.
So can we do this maybe and, and table this and. Give you a chance to bring some, some facts to it, to the, to the table to make that. Maybe get some further, uh, resident feedback out of this house.
Well, I. And I'm just saying that that is. We have such, I just.
And iconic for how many years? And we still have birds coming.
Yeah, thirty years that I've been.
Oakland Nature Preserve.
Well, I will say that at this point, let's, let's, let's give.
I got another thing here from the Federal Communications Commission, it's called Fact Sheet, Migratory Birds. It says lights are called structures, it doesn't say how many feet is a tall structure, but. Those can attract night migrating birds, which can lead to collisions with water, with, I'm sorry, tower structures. And guy wires as well as exhaust and from the birds circling the towers.
So Parker, I was going to ask you anecdotally, have we had any dead birds on our water tower?
Um, I haven't witnessed any and not that I, not that I know of.
But we haven't had it lit up, it's been, the lights been out for what, nine years, other than the.
Oh, I don't think so, am I, am I mistaken? The lights have been, the water tower's been lit for years, since I moved here.
The, the last few years, it has not been turned.
Last couple of years, I think they've offered, but I don't think.
Such a shock for the system.
Yeah, they have been off for a couple of years. And I don't really remember the reason why, or if we even talked about it, to be honest with you. So.
So Parker, how long do you think it's been on?
Since two thousand fourteen.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sure, but.
Give or take.
No, no, that's, I'm just, I am.
Nine years, so nine years, there it is, yes.
Two thousand and fourteen and not realize that it had gone off. I don't think we had talked about that at the commission case, they might have.
The tower in Winter Garden is approximately the same height.
All right, I think we need more back gathering.
I'll make, do we need to make a motion to table it, uh, to a date uncertain at this point? To give you some more facts, is that fair enough?
Let me second, but I won't let Rick finish. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I, I think you have more.
No, that's, that's it for now.
But, I mean, we, we got to just get our data.
Yeah, I agree, and.
Like I was completely.
And I've got a lot of search myself, and unfortunately, you can't find stuff that's specific to water tower.
Well.
I mean, the radio towers, the red lights, you can find that, they even. There, there are some suffered birds being attracted to those lights, that's why they changed them to steady lights, they're flashing lights.
You know, it could be something as simple as the whole of other municipalities and saying, hey, we have this problem. What have you experienced? And, and just to get some, just basic feedback. And, and maybe you can have, make some of them, probably about saying that you have to make all those calls.
Yes, it's however you, Jack, want to handle it.
But that's a good start, I would think.
And more specific, Jack, to this, right? Around our, you know, radius here in Florida. Not, you know, those Vegas lights show and what they can do with their tower. It's irrelevant to us, just something similar to Mount Dora, Leesburg, I mean, hit all the towns that are around the lake first and foremost. So you can see what they're doing, because we share the same lake.
How about Montford, they have a water tower, right? Do you know if they light theirs up?
Again, that's a place to start, so let's get, see what's going on with ones in there.
Pop, uh, Leesburg.
But just because they do it doesn't mean it's.
Gathering information.
It's a place to start. It's not so much right or wrong, it's, at this point, is the fact behind it is, have you had that trouble? Have, have, you know, there are Mike Parkers that are on, have you picked up dead birds? Just to get a feel, at that point, that's a starting point to see if anyone else is having the trouble that we're concerned about. And you might come across and might say, holy crap, this is.
Turning the lights off, it's, well, maybe, well, we're not really sure. You know, I, I can't make that kind of decision. Even though they were off, oh, I don't know.
Well, table. I'm going to look in there. But I wouldn't guess nine years, I gotta tell you that. My head, maybe it has something to do with age.
Yeah. Remember, I won't get.
All right.
All right, um, and I guess.
Motion and a second on the table.
Yeah.
So I gotta, I was, thank you, because I might have forgotten. Um, I'm all rattled now. Anybody in the audience have any thoughts on this?
I did.
Okay.
Come broke, we do rather than here to open.
Can we?
To the one up the. Okay, there you go. Brilliant, I was. All of a sudden, you don't want to talk.
There's Chris Seagull over there between these two. Not biased in my opinion, but I'll tell you my thoughts on it. I think the water tower, you know, working at it. I would say if there was no problems back when it was lit back in the day, then that's one thing. I definitely agree it was too bright. But it wasn't. So from a resident standpoint, driving on a turnpike during the day, you can see that water tower clears day. I don't think it's going to be a nuisance when it's lit up at night, my opinion again. But in case you guys haven't noticed, I have. This is one of the hottest little towns. You know, in Orange County, you know, and, uh. You know, I'm, I'm excited to be here, the real estate values of. You know, gone through the roof, I think I helped that a little bit while we paid for our house, but. Uh, a water tower is pretty cool. You know, and, and looking at it, walking my dogs every day, it's, you know. It's just a cool, it's just a cool aspect, so I hope you guys consider lighting it back up at a dimmer, dimmer. Case, and I agree, as long as it doesn't really affect the wildlife, but if it was lit up for years and years and years and there was no issues. And honestly, on a, on a side note. And I don't want this to come out the wrong way because I sit here, listen, but, you know. Get something done and do it one way or the other.
We will.
Like you guys are spending a lot of time on something that's.
We will, I think we just need to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. It'll be back, it'll be back on the agenda soon, so. Thank you for your, for your thoughts. Anybody else? Okay. Um, staff reports.
We got a, uh. But.
Did I do everything? Oh, still thinking about. Hey, I hope. All right, um, I'm ready back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
We're just tabling it to a date, um, to be determined, but it won't be long. Okay. And Rick, you know, anything you can find or anybody you know that can help us with this, we'll appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm gonna help it more effort, I've done quite a bit already.
Well, and Jack is.
We'll find something.
That.
Direct.
factual.
But I'll keep on looking.
Did we talk, did you talk to the Audubon Society?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And she couldn't find other than, uh, Wisconsin, they've done a lot up in Wisconsin. Right. Um, but she couldn't find anything directly, but, I mean, she supported me and I did not turn it on, but.
You'd think in Wisconsin they'd be finding better ways to shoot ducks out and die. Okay, um, now, did I have a vote, all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, good, now it's staff reports.
All right, a couple of things, so we had a great lunch in here, Troy County, on the sixteenth. Um, and then we had a great dinner last Thursday night honoring the mayor with the Golden Eagle Award. And that was a nice event.
Very, very nice.
Um, the Boy Scouts put on a, a very nice event for that. Um, we also hosted, we didn't host, but Rick Scott had one of his mobile office. And I got a nice thank you note from Senator Scott, uh, for using the, uh, the center. They, very nice staff, uh, they were able to, to help some citizens with federal issues, uh, with Senator Scott.
Local aid here is really a good guy.
Yep, so I, I did get a nice, nice thank you from, uh, Senator Scott. Uh, Saturday, big event, celebration among the oats. And we're also, uh, will be, uh, opening our, our next exhibit, which is a Portrait of Grace, uh, Women's Art and History. Um, so that'll also be opening up on, on Saturday along with celebration among the oats.
I'm super excited about that, because I think we're gonna find people who go, oh, I have a picture of her. Because they have them in their house.
Um, a couple of other things, just, uh, some updates, so, uh, Pulte on San Spurla. Um, we've talked about it some time ago, I talked about with each one of you individually. They were going to expand their pond for more stormwater capacity. That construction should be starting imminently in the next.
We love.
I don't know when, but it will be starting, so there will be some, some construction going on in San Spurla as they. They've got to move some pipes and do some, some different work in order to expand that pond.
So have we let the HOA know to let residents?
Pulte is the HOA or is part of the HOA, so they, yes, they will be notified of that, absolutely. Um, but it's, it, it won't be a town project, it will be a, a Pulte project. Um. Also, the school is looking for input, I think they're going to talk about this at the next hack meeting, but they're looking for input about, uh. How the town and the school benefit from each other, it all can really be able to highlight some of the positives of being, you know, the, the school and the town, uh, being together. So, um. So if any of the commissioners have any, any input that they'd like to give, you know, you can send that to Jack and, and they can bring it up at the, at the next hack meeting.
Well, and the proof is, is in those numbers.
Pretty, um, specifically what they're looking for is how we feel about how the school is, uh. Beneficial as part of the town.
It is.
Um, but they're kind of looking forward for it.
I don't know that they're gonna be able to find a lot of hard facts, but they'll find, you know. And anecdotal things.
I think that's what they're looking for from us, is in, you know, individually to say, you know, well.
I think the same.
College.
Correct. The same importance that we have with the Oakland nature preserve, I'm around the state. It's the same level of importance they bring to our school. They say you guys have a charter school, belongs to your town, but it's the same level as importance. When I talk to a lot of.
And that's the kind of stuff that they're looking for from us on, on the return and exactly that type of stuff.
Yep. And having a leave station that's.
Yes, very unique.
How could we miss?
Um, last thing, just to, to give you a, an update on something that'll be coming in, in April. Um, we've had a lot of starts and stops with our personnel manual. Uh, personnel policy, policy manual, and we've had a, a lot of things that needed to be added. So Jack's been working on that and that'll be something, that'll be staff reviewing it right now and that'll be something that'll be coming to the, um. And it already has. So, um, um, so that'll, that'll be coming up, um, soon. Um, and, uh, other than that, I just want to thank you for the wonderful, wonderful experience. I'm sorry, I'm gonna feel a little emotional here. Wonderful experience of being here and being a part of this town for the last five and a half years. And thank you for the opportunity, um, to let me be a part of this and, um. Know what else to say, but I, I really appreciate everything and everybody and, and the relationships that we've had. And, um, the things that we've been able to accomplish.
Yeah, you will be missed. Don't let him stop you, Christ.
Uh, did they say? Thinking, your face is getting really red.
I know, I know.
Expertise and knowledge that have found that we have before. And you're. I was five and a half years.
Correct.
We're gonna miss you.
Like I said to you earlier, people come and go and we forget about them, but you're not going to be forgotten because you left. A stamp here of what you've done here and the type of person and what you do with the staff is going to be unforgettable.
I appreciate it.
And my thought, you brought our town from, you know, professionalism that was, you know, maybe not at a mom and pop's level, but you definitely brought. A lot of professionalism to us here. And you were very well known, you had a great network locally, so we're really proud to have you as town manager.
Oh, thank you.
Before I talk around this point, we're getting to cry yet. Yeah, I'll add in. With the mayor of Thursday and that, uh, the experience with me, with you has been phenomenal. Um, and I'm, in the beginning, there's no secret of how well I got along, Dennis Fols, I thought, gosh, this is going to be hard. It fit in very well, then we just clicked and I appreciate, you know, and you would, you know, you would call and ask. You for your opinion or, or I would call and ask for your opinion, uh, professionally. For me, you, you have been a great town manager, I appreciate, on top of that. You're leaving here with me knowing that I've got a friend for life, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I have, I've talked to you about this for a while, but I have no words other than to say you will be missed. And you have accomplished a heck of a lot in your time here. And you are an example of many of the right ways to do things, the networking. You know, the expertise, all of that has just been, and the professionalism. That you brought to the town. People like you.
All right, we go ahead and probably get now, so we.
Shane. Shane.
Shane don't want to cry either.
Chair of the PNC for those who don't know that, and he's worked closely with Steve a lot.
I, I, same way that Mike said, you know, this, like, you're probably. If you didn't. Steve, I think Steve will be showing this. Tremendously, uh, he, 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 and there's numerous times where he's reached out to me and that. Opinions, which is, which is great and, and, uh, you know, we've created this friendship, I think. That got with Steve, this on a personal level and in a professional, so, yeah, it's gonna be hard to, to let Steve go. And he told me he was, when I was like. We went a lot of the topside. Not gonna be this. Oh, we're missing, I'm gonna miss it.
Yes.
Good luck, Alan.
Thank you.
I hope you go somewhere where maybe I work too.
May I invite something real quick? Uh, are you going to arrest him?
I'm not. Yeah, keep him here.
I don't know, on a serious note, uh, me, uh, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm the new player here. Uh, from the day he called me and said, town open wants to be this job, uh, the town. And Steve in particular has changed my life. Uh, and I appreciate it and I'll tell you, for those of you don't know, a couple of you in here do, we sat for six weeks. And well, uh, through a teamwork leadership style training, which I affectionately call book club every day. And I will tell you, we had several discussions by ourselves and about what was going on. And whether you know it or not, in the four and a half, five months that I've been here, uh, you have exemplified a lot of those qualities and I don't think you give yourself enough credit, so. Uh, thank you, me personally, thank you, and, you know, I can't say. Uh, and when I do call, pick up the phone.
And, you know, I think it's so wonderful that you are hearing this now, because we all wait too long to tell people what we think of them. Or what the, the good things are, that they're gone and then, you know, you're doing it at a memorial service.
Are you saying? I have it. I mean, the mayor wore black. I wanted to tie, I said, I apologize. But you have a, that, that's a long time.
Or you don't want to rescind your resignation? Okay, I have.
I hope I'm crying, I should.
Coming back to visit at least, you know, so what's, yeah.
Yes.
Around.
Now I gotta get flowers.
I said. I know, said.
Yeah.
Water bottles.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Staff, or not staff, I should.
Oh, I'm good.
You're good.
Um, there's a couple of things, school oriented, I know you've got the, uh, the notice of it is flyaway day for the parade, it's May the twenty-fifth on a Wednesday.
I mean, everything on the town.
Okay. I think most everything else Pam had in her update on it, so, but we've got a few things that we're gonna, uh, be working on with the, uh, the bylaws of the, uh. Uh, of sacks that, uh, need to be changed, but there'll be a lot more to come as, as we get to that. Um, and, um, if you go by and look, they, the tent went up over the playground. So the kids can go out there and it's nice and cool, you know, well, it's cool, it's cool, you can get it down here, but it did go up this week over the playground, so. That's pretty much it for now.
I think I have to think Golden Eagle is great and we're working, you know, towards future and I'm. Trying to figure out how we're going to influence those legislators and. But, uh, it's all good. Thank you very much, um, Joseph is not here, so who would like to close?
I have one thing before. So the goldfish from school's been in there groundbreaking Thursday, um, this Thursday at ten thirty. Um, they wanted to see if anybody was going to be able to attend from the commission. Or anybody that was.
I can.
Attending.
I have to look at my calendar.
I look at my calendar myself at ten thirty AM.
Ten thirty on Thursday, if you could let me know so I can get back to them, that would be good.
Okay.
All right, well then.
If all hearts and minds are satisfied.
There you go.
During, uh, age eleven.
Start that one in honor of.